Welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, July the 19th, 2017 at 6:10. For, uh, this is a special commission meeting.
Yes, this is a special meeting.
Yes. See for the pledge, can we all rise? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item three, cities and presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor. Next item, item four, under new business, uh, special agenda items, item four, A, annual evaluation of the city clerk by mayor and city commission.
That time of a year again. First of all, you know, I, I wanna quickly apologize for last time, not taking the time for this item, but I, uh, reason being, uh, this is an item that I think we, uh, should dedicate quite some time. Not only the city clerk, but also, uh, the city manager spend a lot of time and dedication to the city. And, uh, this is a time of year that we recognize them, and this is a time of year that we evaluate them. And, um, so, um, I felt that we needed, um, you know, special meeting on this. Okay? On, on my behalf, um, I can tell you, Anetti has been here for, I don't know, since she was a little kid.
Yeah. Actually, I, uh, this year, I'll be 21.
She's still a little kid.
Becoming a legal age, 21 years.
Oh, you'll be 21 years old.
However, you wanna see.
But she started when she was five, right?
Yes, of course.
But, uh, most importantly, most importantly is, is, uh, how she has grown in the, in the field of, as a clerk, uh, which, uh, she had been serving for seven years, plus or minus?
Since 2010, yes, as a clerk.
Seven years.
Seven years already.
Okay, so my math is good?
Good, yes.
Um, I can tell you, she has grown tremendously, and, uh, especially this year, I believe, uh, she's the president of the, uh, clerk association. And, uh, so that, that, it's a great accomplishment because, uh, it's a, it's not only being the president, but to get to that point, you had to not only do your job well, but also you had to be in a leadership position to, uh, to be in that role. So, with that, um, I'm gonna open to, to the table, you know, any, any comments that, uh, we might have.
Ladies first.
Hello, hello. Mr. Mayor, Anetti is always there for anything I need, anytime I call, she has all the answers, any request I have, she's very well-prepared, and I agree in that she's continually going to the clerk training, what's it called? The clerk leadership?
Yes, no, I, I already obtained my, my municipal, certified municipal clerk, now I'm pursuing the master municipal clerk certification.
And how much longer do you have on that?
Probably I'll have one or two academies more to achieve the, the, the points that I need to, to, to get my certification.
So the masters, like go for your masters in college type of thing, is like, a whole another level above the basic certification?
It's the highest level in, 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 yes.
Which is outstanding, that she continuously pursues, um, uh, pursues achievements in, in that fashion. So I think she's done an outstanding job, and, um, I, I'm very, very honored and humbled to have her as part of our team.
I agree with you and with the mayor, she's been very good.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen?
You want me to speak now? Oh, okay.
You got the floor.
Thank you. Well, let me see, let me think of some good adjectives.
That haven't been used already, right?
Asidious, disciplined, assertive, social, um, she follows up, follows through, um, you know, there's, if you ask her something and she doesn't know, she will find the answer for you, which is a, a very wise thing to do, instead of just saying something to get the, to get us off our back. And, and, you know, she always follows through, she always makes a call, she sends an email, um, it'd been my experience that everything that I've asked and everything that I wanted, you know, she's, she's accomplished. She's prudent, she's temperate, um, you know, she always has a good advice, um, and, and she's self-motivated, um, you know, like Commissioner Rodriguez said, she goes to these, uh, academies and accomplishes, uh, you know, obtaining and graduating from these modules that make her, you know, better at, uh, at what she does. And consequently, she, like the mayor stated, she was, uh, voted among her peers to be the director, director or president.
President.
President of the clerks association for this year. So, so that in itself, you know, is one heck of an accomplishment. So, let me see, are there any other adjectives that I left out?
That's a pretty long list.
But, uh, I mean, I can go on and on, you know, she's doing a great job. I, I, I think that, you know, we're lucky to have her, and, and, um, she's doing a terrific job. And I agree with the mayor, and I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez.
Mayor, I want to, oh, you finished?
I'm done.
Uh, I want to, I want to.
Got more.
No. You want to keep saying things, you know, I know you are a good speaker. So time, we have to tell you, stop.
I shoot from the hip.
No, I mean, I mean, you know, just.
From the heart.
I know.
I got a bullets, a lot of bullets, sometimes I don't.
No, you are a good speaker, I know, I know. Now, what I was, uh, in reference to the mayor, that he opened that thing with positive things, it really, because, how many years you been here as a, as a clerk?
Seven years.
Seven years. Now, seven year, she's the clerk of city of West Miami. Now, mayor, how many cities there are in county, in the county?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four cities. And each city have a manager, male or female. So in seven years, this product of West Miami get the presidency of the, of the association of the clerk. But behind this, I want to call the attention of everybody. She start, uh, with, uh, George Cooley. She was assistants of George Cooley in public works, right?
Yes.
Couple of years, right?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six year, no?
No, 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 since ninety-six, no, no.
It seemed like ninety-six years.
Yes.
In nineteen ninety-six, okay.
Working with Cooley is.
So, George Cooley was a good professor for her. She learn a lot with George Cooley in public work. So she get the base of the many things in the city. Then she was transferred for the public work to assistance of the manager, right?
From public works to the front office.
To the office Aguilar, um, Yolanda Aguilar, how many years you was assistant manager?
I was for like, six or seven, since 2003, since 2009.
Four years, five years? So.
Seven years more.
Being the assistant, secretary assistant of Yolanda Aguilar, she learn more and more and more. So she start learning in public works, and then she came to the main office of this city with the manager. And the manager polish her in the city business in many, many things. So when she came to the position of clerk, she was with very good professors, George Cooley and you.
Thank you.
So she was a good product from our city. She was built in our city. You had to feel good, right?
Engineered, engineered.
Yeah, so, so she was in the school in QB University in, in architectural school, right?
Mechanical engineering.
But anyway, she learn here, city of Miami, so she's our product, she has been doing very well, and in this, with this, uh, numbers I show you, thirty-four cities in seven years, she's the president. So that means that George Cooley and Yolanda Aguilar did a good job.
Thank you.
And then we did a good job hire her as a clerk. So we had to congratulate everybody, Lady George Cooley, Yolanda, and.
The city is the winner.
Right?
The city is the winner.
So congratulations.
The city wins for the greater good of the city.
Mayor, I think you're right, she and Commissioner Rodriguez, and Commissioner Blanca, I mean, Vice Mayor Blanca, and Commissioner Blanes, and myself, I think we have been, we are very happy, she is doing outstanding work, and, uh, I think doing very well. And we have two pieces there, Yolanda the manager and she the clerk, these two ladies doing a good job there. Outstanding, you agree with me?
I agree, and actually, more importantly, if I just may add one thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Considering her very young age that you've brought to the table, how young Anetti is. She's only, no, no, you're young at heart. Anetti is young, young of age.
All right.
But sometimes young of heart is even more important than young of age. So with Anetti being such a young, dedicated professional, she's only got, it's only, it's only up from here. I mean, she's gonna grow with us, and, like I said, you know, we're, we're, we are honored to have her and have her grow with us, 'cause she's very young, so she's only got upwards, upwards to go, from here. A very bright future ahead.
Thank you. Madam manager, I believe you got something to say?
Yes, I'll be as brief as possible, uh, Mr. Mayor, but I have had the privilege and the pleasure of working with Anetti. Although she does not report to me, I work alongside, uh, by Anetti, with, with Anetti, and at times, we don't always agree, however, I have to, uh, put on the record that Anetti is diligent. Um, she has developed into a professional city clerk, and I have to tell you that there's only been since nineteen, since nineteen eighty, since the city became a city manager form of government, we've only had four clerks. We've been very fortunate, talking to the issue of institutional knowledge, continuity, stability that this city has, this is, Anetti is the fourth clerk. It was Boots Kleiner when I came to work here. I became the city clerk, uh, after Boots resigned, then it was our late esteemed city clerk Felix Diaz, and Anetti was appointed to that position seven years ago, and there's not one day that goes by that I stand behind the recommendation that we made to allow her the opportunity to become the city clerk, because I always knew that she had a lot to offer. She's still, um, developing professionally, but she has a young career ahead of her, and, and, you know, I, I think that someday she will be in a, in a tremendous position of authority, I see it happening. So the city's in good hands, and so that, it, there's a lot to be said, and I think we should be a case study, uh, in terms of a city when you have such institutional knowledge, pretty much in all departments of the city, we have tenured employees, and I think that sends a huge message of stability and knowledge to the community, and, and so I congratulate you for a job very well-done, professional, for always wanting to do better. There's just a lot to be said about that. So, Anetti, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
I think Commissioner Blanes has exhausted the, uh, the adjectives.
The adjectives.
And has taken the winter out of my sail, but I just wanted to say something, and not only about Anetti, but also about the manager. There hardly a day goes by that I don't speak to either Anetti or Yolanda, one, twice, three times, four times, five times, a day, okay? I, I see, uh, I'm blessed, really, because they make my life very easy. Uh, Anetti and I speak on a, on legal issues almost in a daily basis. Uh, she has questions that puts me in a position of having to research sometimes, but I think that every single question, you see, uh, there's a lot of people that claim that have all the answers, and for somebody to be humble and say, "Look, um, I need to resolve this issue, uh, please assist me to resolve it," uh, it's, that's a trademark of being a great person. And, um, I, I wanted to save this also for Yolanda, but, uh, I have a privilege of having the pleasure of, of, of working with Anetti, uh, as I say, in a daily basis.
Thank you, babe.
Thank you, thank you, babe.
Thank you.
Can I talk, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say something? Okay, I want to, to thank you for always encouraging me to go a step forward and, and your support through my educational endeavors. Yes, I've been, been with the city for twenty-one years already, West Miami is part of my life, part of my family, and I, I, I mean, and I, I'm, I have plans to, to, to keep it. And also, I do appreciate your feedback and, and, and your words of encouragement and, and your nice, uh, adjectives. Also, I appreciate, I really appreciate, like, you feed through or feed forward, like, meaning, how can I be better, how can I do things better? If you ever have an idea that I can do things in a different way or in a better way, just let me know, don't hesitate, because that's what I want to do. I want to do things better, work, uh, for this commission and for the citizens of West Miami, and ultimately for the greater good of our city. So I also want to thank my colleagues, uh, Mr. Villalobos, always having his words of wisdom, always having the advice on how can we proceed in the better way, and Yoli, who has been always my mentor, we don't agree on everything, she calls me like Miriam the librarian and the Freud, Freud dissector, and all those names.
In a good way.
But in the, in a good way, I know, because I.
Those are terms of endearment.
Yes, of course, because I do admire her way, pragmatic way to see things, sometimes I'm more like subliminal and more like, uh, like, I mean, in, in other places, because I, I like to, to always get to the bottom of things, and sometimes it's more practical. And that's why we make a good team, because, uh, by that combination, the results are always the best ones. So I always, I mean, I tell Yoli, I'm a product of her mentorship, um, her, of her encouragement and, and, and her, uh, day, day-to-day activities, who ultimately, uh, are the best product that we can get here in the city. So I thank everybody, and thank you for, for your kind words.
And I just wanted to say that whenever they have an argument, they call me for arbitration.
Yes, yes.
You don't bill us for that, do you? You don't bill us for that arbitration, do you?
We always solve it.
We're capable of solving it.
Yes, yes. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, just a couple of things. I even told me you're not cooking breakfast anymore, so, no, I'm just kidding.
Now, what's that got to do with evaluation?
He does, I trained him well, he does.
Uh, okay, um, that's great, I'm, I'm glad that we're all in agreement, and, and I love when we're in agreement, uh, because, uh, that means that, uh, we all are, are doing a great job and, and, as a team, and, and, is, we, we're moving in the same direction, which is great. But there's an item that, that we haven't spoken about, that I gotta break the ice on it, and that has to do with money compensation and so on. And, um, I, and I'm sure you do as well, I do respect the manager, and I do respect, uh, you know, the team that the manager has, uh, you know, to, to be able to put together this budget. And, um, I, I looked at the items in reference to Anetti, and, um, you know, we always wanna give more, uh, and at least that's my take, uh, but when you are, when you do a budget, you have to balance the budget. And, uh, we, uh, as far as I remember, uh, sitting in this table, uh, we have worse years, if you count the number of worst years, it's a lot, lot, lot more than the best years that we had. Uh, for the first time now, we seeing better years. Uh, and, and I seen that in the past, where we had a few good years and, and, you know, the commission went a little nuts, and, and then you pay the price, you know, and then, um, I think we need to compliment ourselves, because we have been able to pull the reins and see the vision and seize the vision. And, uh, so with that, I mean, I, I seen that, um, you know, in terms of salary, I, I see an increase of, you know, six point thirty, more or less, a percent. Um, you know, I wish it could be more than that, but again, that's, that's a question for, for the manager. The other thing that I, that I see, I see an increase in, in deferred income, you know, an additional five hundred bucks. And, um, and then, you know, I also, I'm glad that, you know, the, uh, the, the spending in, in continued education is still there, you know, for, for two thousand dollars, 'cause sometimes we, we tamper with that, and, and we all, we all need to continue growing in, in, in many directions, uh, 'cause if we grow, not only do we help ourselves, but we help the city, and, uh, ultimately, that's what we need to do. So, I mean, I'm in agreement on all those things, um, also, but I, I, I think we need to do a little more, and, and what I, and, and again, with all the respect to the manager, with all the respect to, to the, uh, the budget and so on, perhaps we should look at a, at a one-time compensation, you know, like a, like a, like a bonus, the, the, and, and again, I'm just gonna leave it at that for guidance. I, I don't wanna, although I wanna be on the high side, but I wanna make sure that I hear from, from the table and, and the manager, just to make sure that we, we do the right thing. And again, I know that was not contemplated in the budget, that's the only item that I don't see contemplated in the budget, but I think, uh, we should go the extra mile on that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I, I, I get your idea, and I think you're right, especially in this, in this, this moment, that we are going to be very busy in the, in the next year, with many things in the city, and I agree with you, that we have to, to try to, to make everybody happy and everybody, um, not only happy, but recognize the efforts that we doing, the people doing here, because with the personnel that we have here, we are doing a lot of things that in other places need three, four, five, six more people than we have here. These ladies work overtime so many times, and they don't charge, they don't go by the overtime, they extra hours, because sometimes they have to wait for calls for Tallahassee or for calls for the lawyers or for calls, and they have to be here until five, six, seven o'clock, and they don't charge for that, and they, they, they do a lot of things that, if you are looking at, I, I agree with you, that's something, sometimes you have to recognize those efforts. I agree with you. I have to be compensated, I agree with you.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I, I concur, and, um, I think that, uh, as far as compensation, I think that it would be more beneficial to the city clerk, instead of doing a one-time bonus type of, of, uh, of recognition to her, to her salary, I think it should be something permanent. Maybe not, uh, you know, a lot, but something commensurate to what she already has received. Um, and point being made is that she's being recognized, you know, here, uh, by us, and, you know, sometimes it's not the, the amount, but, you know, the recognition of, of us saying that she deserves a little more. So I think it should be something permanent, you know, uh, in, instead of a one-time, uh, type of deal, bonus deal, uh, I think it should be, you know, something, maybe small, something that can be tolerated by the budget, but I think it should be permanent.
Okay, anybody else?
So Commissioner, you're saying as opposed, opposed to a bonus, a, a slight increase in the, in this salary?
Yes.
So spread it out over the year versus one time?
Yes.
My only reservation would be, as in anything, is where would the money come from? I know this, this is a preliminary budget, so I know there, there, there will be tweaking, so that would be the only thing I'd like to see is where, where would, where would the money be taken from, um, to go to that line item? So once I'm shown that, and, um.
That, that perhaps is a question to the city manager.
Exactly, exactly, and it's not a question that can be answered here right now. So again, this is a preliminary submittal, so, um, I would just, I, I would love to give everybody more, as we all would.
Absolutely.
We, we all would love to take all these numbers that the manager and our finance director have submitted to us and make them all better, from, all the way from the bottom to the top. But we all know very well that that's not possible, and, um, I know that the city is in a very good financial position now as opposed to before, so, again, we don't want to splurge, and I'm not calling this a splurge, but we, we still need to, to remain fiscally, you know, sound. So as long as I see where the money's coming from, then I will certainly entertain your thoughts.
Well, if it does happen, it has to come from somewhere.
Exactly. So, so, you know, I just.
Exactly.
Let me make a comment.
I would definitely entertain, entertain your ideas.
Let me make a comment about this, because I seen this question many times, the money comes from the revenues. That's where the money comes, from the revenues. And the revenues that this city receive are because, uh, the well-done of the administration of the city. And when you spend money in paper, comes from the revenue. This water that we, this glass, come from the revenue. The electricity that we pay to FPL, come from the revenue, all the money come from the revenues. Now, when the administration is good, and the administration is doing a good job, and the revenue are well-administered, that's what I mean, we have to recognize that people that are doing the good job, because the money come from the revenue, also come from the, that came out from the, from the, from the heavens. Now, the people who do, they do and work in administration, they do a good job, like we have in public work people, like we have people, you know, in the police department, we recognize and we compensate the good effort and the good, we work. But the revenue is the revenue, that's where the money come.
Understood, uh, but I, but let me clarify something, I, I think we got a little off tangent here, and, and if you notice, when I, when I made my presentation, um, the first thing I talked about was the budget, and, and that's why, um, I didn't want it, you know, uh, insert any effort in, into the actual budget, that's why I, I refer to a one-time bonus, because that's something that, if there's any surplus money that you can move around, but, uh, when, when we start dealing with salaries and things like that, which is spread throughout the year, then, if we do it here, you know, why don't we do it someplace else, and, and so on, so, so that's why. But I think the best way is to turn over to the managers, she had left, you know, raised her hand a couple of times, and I, I wanna hear from the manager.
Thank you. The preliminary budget will be submitted formally to you this evening at 7:30 PM. You all have received the budget, and my office has made a recommendation, obviously with the understanding that I am not the. obviously with the understanding that I am not the immediate supervisor to the city clerk. It's obviously, her position falls within your jurisdiction as mine does. And so, that being said, I put in there a place marker, a six point two seven percent and a slight increase to her deferred compensation as a management recommendation and it was highlighted as such. It all depends how you wanna handle this. If it is a one-time bonus that you're looking or an incentive that you would like to issue to the city clerk for her, for her well-done and her performance and everything, her job, you would have to determine what fiscal year you want it coming out of. If you wanna pay that bonus, if you're looking at the bonus route and you wanna pay it this year at this time as a, as a follow-up to her evaluation, then it must come from this year's budget, which ends September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. If you wish to contemplate, contemplate it in next year's budget, that is, takes effect after October first and it's payable at your discretion whenever you determine it. For now, and, and this budget has to be presented at seven thirty, for now, it would have to probably deplete a little bit of your either contingency fund or reserves, the way the budget sits today. And like I said in my message, this is a preliminary budget. During the month of August, we're gonna get some real good numbers from our insurance carriers and other factors that we weigh in as we prepare the budget. And we'll be closer to our estimation as to where we will be at the end of twenty eighteen. So it all depends how you wanna pay it and when you wanna pay it. It's, it's up to, to your discretion. If it's this year, it would have to be from the reserves. And if it's next year, we would have to shuffle some money around. But for now, from looking at, at a bird's eye view, it would have to deplete reserves or contingency. Whatever it is that you have determined that is, is feasible and, and doable in terms of her recognition.
And if it was after October for the next year's budget, where would it come out of?
It, the same. It would come out of, it would deplete reserves or contingency, one of the two. And I wanna say contingency. Because obviously, my message, once I deliver the, the message from the manager's office at seven thirty P.M., it is to increase our reserves so that we could be prepared for next year's ballot proposal, which I suspect that it will, it will pass unanimously.
Okay, can I, can I make a comment? Wait, 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 hold on a second. Let me make a comment. I, this, this is a thought, this is a thought, okay? All right. With the same idea of keeping the budget, not tampering with the budget, the way it's presented, okay? I, I prefer if it's spent from, from this year, okay? And I'll tell you where I think. I'll give you, I'll give you one example, you know? We ourselves have an account that we use some money for certain things. And every year, you know, sometimes there's money left, sometimes there's no money left in those accounts. And then we defer that, that, that money back to whichever. Sometimes I, I, in the past, I had given that money to the police department, to bicycles, you name it. Back to, you know, when, when I was concerned about the putting back into reserve, that money went back. And, and I'm talking about me in specific, the monies of the mayor. In, in this case, I volunteer, you know, you know, all of it or some of that money to, to go. That way, we don't tamper into next year's budget. It is, is a money that has been contemplated to be spent already. So, I mean, that's, that's an idea, so.
It's a good idea, Mr. Mayor.
And I want to follow your, your idea. I think it would, it should be this year because two thousand eighteen is going to be a very heavy year here. So we have to contemplate next year. It's going to be a very heavy year in projects, in work. So it's going to be an extra work in, in the city next year. So I agree with you, that should be this year. And I think what you propose, once, one-time bonus, do not complicate so much the, the budget. So it's, it, in the way you said, whoever doesn't spend the money or don't want to dedicate it to that, it's a good idea to, because that money is already go back to the funds.
Okay.
May I present a question to this? How do we know, when can we know what money we have left?
I, I personally have no idea.
Okay, usually, and, and your finance director is here and she cannot yea or nay. She posted up until the month of May, twenty seventeen. And we don't have the nine-month or the ten-month figures just yet. I can tell you unequivocally that we could potentially take whatever allocation you make to reward the, the city clerk for her professionalism. We can take it out of categories where we have not spent the money. However, I need to caution you that some accounts have gone over budget and so that's why you allow me to transfer those dollars. So all I can think about is if we don't have sufficient money to cover this, which we could look at some of the categories and it all depends on the amount of money that you wish to compensate the clerk at this time, then we could look at some of those categories and take it out of this year's budget. If you're looking at a bonus. If you're looking at, um, making a permanent change to the salary over and above what we've allotted for next year, then we have to make some revisions and bring that to you at the budget hearings. Whatever route you take. So far, am I correct, Mrs. Leon?
Sounds to me like I like your idea and Commissioner Suarez that if we take it out of this year, it will not affect at all next year's budget as written. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm...
Commissioner Blanis, how do you, how do you feel about that?
I concur, I agree.
Okay, all right.
It is very easy.
So, so that, yeah.
It's very easy because if you have two thousand dollars and you only spend two, two hundred, three hundred, whatever the money left, normally this money go back to, you know...
Correct.
But in this case, that money could be used for that.
So now I'll just wait finding out how much I have in my account?
Well, let's, let's do the following. Remember, today we evaluating the city clerk and the city manager. So it's when, it's like when you go out and for dinner or for drinks, don't spend it all in one shot. So just keep it in mind. It has to be balanced. Yes, sir.
Before you would do that, may I confer with the council and with manager?
Yes.
How about?
Because that fifty dollars for the league comes from that.
Yeah, I haven't already how much I have left.
If you go to, to, to the league ten times a year, half a hundred dollars. If you go to the league, it's four times a year, two hundred dollars. And the balance is, you have the rest.
So I'll just check with you, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much it is.
You always give it to the police, you give it already?
So, so here's a thought.
You donated your money to the police department?
So here's a thought, if we all...
I only donate once or twice to the city.
If we all donate two hundred dollars out of our account, which is not, not a whole lot, but that'll make a thousand dollars.
I don't know, it all depends, it all depends the, the amount of the bonus that wants to be done and all depends the money left.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, I'm not in trouble?
If I may?
I don't know. When the attorney says he wants to speak.
May I?
Yes.
May I, Mr. Mayor? I think to keep things simple and, and I think that, um, I think that we need to look at next year's budget and try to keep it as intact as possible so that we could be prepared for the tough times, as well stated by Commissioner Suarez and as, as per what we envision will happen next year and hopefully we'll be in better shape. But I think that right now, a one-time recognition bonus, if that's what you wanna call it, will probably be better, best than asking us to go back and reevaluate our budget.
We, we're in agreement. We don't need to, we, we...
We agree.
I already asked a question to Commissioner Blanis, so we're all in agreement. Okay. As far as the, the numbers, I guess you need to, we, we need to look at it. So, um, 'cause I don't know how much we have in the account. Like I said, we, we talk, we're talking about the evaluation of two, two persons, okay? Do you wanna add anything else or? Okay.
When can you give us an amount?
Do we have to, I'm sorry.
That we not, when, when can we know what we have left in our accounts? Does that take a week, two weeks?
We can find out in the next couple of minutes.
No, no, not, doesn't be tonight, no, no, the next coming days.
Well, it, it all depends. Some of you don't utilize your accounts and some of you do.
Right, so...
The representation accounts. It all depends on the magnitude of, of the incentive bonus that you want to give. We, we need to find whether there's money available there. You know, whether there's money in, in the city manager's account, if you wanna take it from there. The expense account for the city manager. It all depends where you would like to get it.
Madam Aguilar, I, I, I volunteer mine. I didn't even mention the city manager or anybody else. And if anybody else wants to volunteer, I mean, again, we have to look at it. So, since I volunteer mine, okay, I'm gonna, you know, yes, yes, Commissioner.
It's, it's easy in a, in a way. If you make a calculation, how many times you has been in the league? The league costs fifty dollars a month, I mean, every time. So you has been in the league ten times, you have been in the league four times, that's two hundred. And then the balance is there. We have the numbers, whatever you spend and the balance is there. So Candy already give it to the police department. And I don't know how many you have spent, I don't know. I, I have to go to the, I went, I have been to the league like you, like you. But anyway, do you have an idea, the, the amount you want to, to have an idea?
But we don't know because we don't know if we're going to go to it.
But in order to see...
I, I'll tell you the amount right now. Based on, I mean, since I'm only talking about myself, I wanna guess fifteen hundred. I mean, 'cause I know I have about two thousand something, so I don't know how...
In, in your account?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how much I have.
They said, fly, you may have two thousand dollars in the balance.
I have no idea.
No, but I mean, you know, gross numbers. And you have another thousand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But I'm talking about, Mayor, the proposal that you had the bonus for her. You have an idea, four thousand, one-time, one-time bonus?
I, I, I can only talk about my money, fifteen hundred, that's my number.
No, no, that's your money personally, but I mean...
That's, I don't wanna volunteer anything else, if you...
No, but you have an idea, the, the amount, the, the bonus, the one that you want to...
I just told you, fifteen hundred.
In total.
But fifty hundred is what you think you have?
That's what he says.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
That's what you, you said that you may have in your account.
So proportionately out of our accounts, whatever we have left...
That's what I say, I have no idea, once I know how much I have.
You know what, I, I wanna congratulate us all. Because we have been discussing this small matter for at least thirty minutes, which, which goes to show how prudent and careful we are spending the city's money, taxpayer money. And we're all in agreement that the city clerk deserves to be compensated more because of her extraordinary work that she's done. But nonetheless, we, you know, you go to some other cities and, and, you know, they throw out numbers and it's in the hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands, millions, and there's no problem. You know, they enjoy the great residential growth, commercial growth, growth and, and height. But we don't. We, we always...
We still have the evaluation of the manager.
Yes.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. But anyways, I, I... It's my observation, it's my observation, you know, and, and, and you know what? It's, it's a tribute to, to what we do here.
Thank you.
Okay. My question, Mayor, is not what you want to do. My question is, if you want to present a one-time bonus, do you have an idea?
I already answered, fifteen hundred, that's my number.
That's his, his number.
But it's not your number what I ask you.
I can't, I can't volunteer your, I, I can't volunteer your money or anybody else's money.
You're asking for a total, you're asking for a total.
The total of the bonus you thought.
I cannot talk about the total because we...
So let's move right on into the evaluation of our city manager.
Okay. That item has to be read into the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item four B, annual evaluation of the city manager and preliminary discussion regarding a transition plan. This is by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay. Madam Manager, that time again, huh? Okay. Well, we got about thirty minutes or less, so... Actually, before we talk about money, I'm more concerned about institutional knowledge, continuity. I don't know, for whatever reason, there's a whole bunch of people in the city of West Miami that started a long, long time ago. And we're not getting any younger. And, and one thing that I, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the end of the drop, I guess it will be around July two thousand nineteen for you?
That is correct. July thirtieth, twenty eighteen is my drop dead date.
Okay, and I'm very concerned about that personally. Me as a mayor, that I've been here for quite some time. For the first time in a long time, we beginning to see stability. We've been fighting for it, we've been dreaming about it and now that we see it, I wanted to see if it's possible, if that can continue a little bit longer. So, so I feel for the city, not necessarily I... It reminds me of that time that I picked up the phone and I called you and I asked you a very selfish question. I said, will you consider coming back to the city? And I wasn't thinking about Yolanda back then. I was thinking about Yolanda Aguilar as a manager, how she served the city and everybody gets a benefit from it. And that's when, so that's why I say it was a very selfish question. And I always look at it that way, you know? I learned something from my dad a long time ago that, you know, one of the things that happens is when you sit in this board, the first thing you need to do when you walk in is take your eagle and put it in your pocket and then conduct a meeting. 'Cause otherwise, it gets single-sided and we always have to look for. So anyway, I don't wanna be long-winded here. Basically, I, I just have a series of questions and mainly, the, the question for discussion is, what is the plan? What is the plan after? I mean, in a very selfish way, I'm gonna ask you the same question. Will, will you consider continuing or coming back? And whatever the parameters are, there's something that I need your guidance on it. I know there are certain rules and regulations that, that need to be followed. And, but, you know, after that time, will you return?
Yes.
Would you consider returning?
Yes. I will consider returning. I will, if the mayor and the members of this city commission unanimously believe that I am the best choice to continue as manager of the city, I can have the, the separation as required by the Florida Division of Retirement. I can separate myself from the city, make an acting, appoint an acting city manager. I, if, if that is the wish of this commission, I will gladly come back. I gotta tell you that although you're talking about the transition before the evaluation, I don't see myself ever working anyplace else other than the city of West Miami. I joined the drop program at a point in time where things were not as stable as they appear to be, as they are now. I, I am not old enough to fully retire. I cannot even get my benefits from social security, so... But I did want to clinch my full retirement benefits from the state of Florida at a point in time where there was not this much stability. So I wanted to do that. And now, five years, moving fast forward, five years have gone by and the end of my drop is exactly a year away. and the end of my drop is exactly a year away. Um, this not only affects me, I have to talk to you about the transition in general. It affects somebody that I believe that all of us have ultimate faith in the finances of the city, and we've entrusted the finance director with the finance of the city, Mrs. Leon, who's here. She leaves the same day I leave. We both completed our drop paperwork the same day, and we end the fifth year of our drop program on the same day. So walking out the door on July thirtieth of next year, you're gonna have seventy years of combined institutional knowledge to the city of West Miami, walking out the front door. So, no, no, no.
Combined.
Combined institutional knowledge. I as well, I'm not old enough. I'm not twenty-one like the city clerk is. I'm just a little bit... I'm a little bit more mature. There you go. I'm a little bit more mature. Uh, do I still have it in me? The answer is yes. Do I want to continue serving the city of West Miami? Like I said, I wouldn't think of working anyplace else unless that's not the plan, and I will honor it, respect it. But the answer is yes. Do I have a transition plan that I have already thought about, slept on, considered, contemplated? The answer is yes. I do have a plan that I think would work out very well for that six-month period of time. The day I walk out the door, I have to be out so that I can follow the guidelines of the state and not jeopardize my pension. Um, I must be away for six months. I need to sever myself financially from the city. I may not, I cannot be compensated. I will be coming back, if this is the wish of the commission, on a volunteer basis. And then I can return on payroll on February first, twenty nineteen, which it seems like a long time away, but it really isn't. Tomorrow. So, I must put this on the record so that it is very clear that I must follow the guidelines set by the state of Florida. So, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would, I would be honored to return.
Mayor, may I... I don't want to talk about the outstanding work, professional lady, manager, whatever all these ladies are, Yolanda and Lou. I don't have time to do that, so I just want to make... They are marvelous. They are outstanding, but I have something to say. I make a motion for a happy return.
Second. I have a question first. Is there a maximum amount of volunteer hours? Or is that unlimited volunteer hours?
Unlimited.
You know, does FRS put a maximum on volunteer hours?
I'm all yours.
Or is that unlimited?
No, not limited.
I'm checking. I'm checking. I'm just checking.
I belong to the city. I cannot be compensated for any of that time in any way, shape, or form.
Unlimited, no maximum volunteer hours. Got it.
Friendly amendment. I still make a motion for the happy return for both of them.
Was that the happy return? Or was it happy return or happy hour?
Happy return and happy volunteer hours.
Okay, perfect.
Everybody happy.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you gotta...
Congratulations.
All right. Just for that portion. So, all right. Let's move forward. Um, I have, uh, Commissioner... I mean, I'm sorry, the Vice Mayor first?
Yes, thank you. I would like to put a motion on the table to give the city manager a bonus for her wonderful performance in the amount of five thousand dollars like we did last year for Mr. Pena.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a motion put on the table.
Oh, you have a motion?
I wanted to speak before the motion.
Oh.
So, can I speak? Can I say something? You know...
Mr. Attorney, I need your guidance here.
Yes, sir.
It's a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table, and, um, Commissioner Blanis wanted to speak before the motion, and I couldn't read mine, so I...
Actually, Commissioner Blanis, whenever there's a motion, there has to be a follow-up motion. I think that the motion was premature. I would respectfully suggest the Vice Mayor to just withdraw the motion for the time being and allow Commissioner Blanis to speak about performance first.
I withdraw it for a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And allow Commissioner Blanis to speak about performance. You all can talk about performance, but if we follow what we have, the Roe v. Rule, this is the right way of doing it.
We get it.
And I think that Commissioner Blanis should speak first.
Okay, before Commissioner Blanis... Okay, let me clarify something. I yield to Commissioner Suarez, so I, first, and my fault for opening the table too. But like the city attorney said, let's talk about performance. And I'm some... As a matter of fact, I kind of jumped the gun myself because that was my worry about the continuity plan. So, yes, let's talk about performance, and then right after that, I still have more questions about continuity. And then, lastly, let's talk about financial. Okay, go ahead.
So I get to talk now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I have a unique perspective. I worked for the city of Miami for thirty-three years. And, you know, so during all that time, I have observed very keenly, you know, what the city did and most other cities. And I can tell you that the city of West Miami cannot afford to make any of the mistakes that other cities have made. Because if we did, we would fold. In our city, the way that it is laid out, structured out as far as revenues and expenses and recurring revenues, that is, uh, we don't have the luxury of making the wrong decisions whatsoever, at all. If there is something that is contemplated, you know, like a eye in the sky kind of thing, you know, that could break us. And consequently, I think that since I've been sitting here, the city manager and our chief financial officer have been able to maneuver this city financially through some incredibly turbulent times. And they did not make a mistake. They did not make a mistake. Because if we would have made a mistake, the city of West Miami wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be sitting here. We would be part of Miami-Dade County. So, you know, I live here, and I love this place. And, you know, now that I see that this city is, um, in the words of Winston Churchill, "It's not the beginning of the end, but the ending of the beginning," that this city is embarking in. And right now, we can see, you know, the fruits being reaped. And that is because of the city manager's management of the city and the chief financial officer. So I wanted to say this before we talked about them coming back, but I didn't get a chance. So, I, for one, you know, would be delighted to see this continuity. And I agree wholeheartedly with you. You know, right now, we're in a position where, you know, next year, hopefully, we'll have a better year, and we can do some of the things that we've been talking about, and maybe even more. So, with that said, I yield back to the table.
Well, back to the table, thank you. Uh, and perhaps the fact that, um, we did not compliment you in the beginning doesn't mean that you don't deserve to be complimented and be... The fact that we asked you that particular question, I think, is a huge compliment that we asked you to stay and continue. Uh, that, to me, says a whole lot. Otherwise, we will not be asking the question. So that is the ultimate question for your performance for many years. And we have nothing, I mean, on my behalf, um, you're the longest city manager, I mean, serving a city in Dade County. I mean, how do you top that? Um, on and on. And the reason is, uh, coasting. It's actually rock and roll and through tough time that have earned you that title and that, you know, longevity. So, um... I have no anything, any but, just compliment for the outstanding work that you have done throughout the years for the city of West Miami. And not only that, but, uh, you know, your sacrifice sometimes. You put yourself first in the sense of you're the first one that says, "I don't want to race. I don't want to, I want to continue making the same salary." You know, you never talk about yourself. You never ask about yourself, which I, I find very interesting, for lack of a better word. So, um, you're always serving other people rather than thinking about serving yourself. And to me, that's commendable.
Thank you.
So, anybody else that wants to talk on that subject?
I do, and I'm gonna put it in just some more different terms. If we think of the city as a boat or a ship, and we think of our city manager as a captain, then we have our finance director as a first mate. So this boat...
Navigator.
Navigator. Very good. Thank you. So this boat has been in some turbulent waters over time, as you guys have said. But right now, the water is very calm, very calm, very still, and this boat is going in the right direction. So, let's not rock the boat. Let's keep the boat as is with our captain, our first mate, our navigator. Let's continue going in the right direction. That's good.
Madam Manager, thank you. Madam Manager, in going back to the original question, you talk about a plan, but what will be your plan? What will be your suggestion in terms of continuity? And can you elaborate a little more on that within the guidelines?
Sure. Um, and like I said, I need to be... When I complete my Florida retirement system drop program, I must separate myself and from any compensation that the city offers me right now. I must sever completely for a period of six months. Otherwise, it puts my pension for my golden years in jeopardy. So that being said, I would be prepared, when the time comes, to make an acting, to designate an acting city manager, subject to the approval from this commission, and that would be an agenda item for a future meeting. And that would put me in a volunteer capacity. I will come in, um, and I will strive to be here as much as possible. I believe that the person I have in mind, if this commission approves it and ratifies it, is totally capable of handling the day-to-day affairs, and it would probably be in my best interest anyways to come in, I don't know, three, three times a week, I think, should be sufficient for me to stay on top of the matters that come before the office of the city manager while we have an acting individual. However, when you have an acting manager, a person serving for a period of time during your absence, obviously, you have to let that person make decisions, and I will honor and respect that. Obviously, I know that you know that I will be there every step of the game and every step of the way. But I have to be out for six months. Uh, my returning to the city, obviously, is God willing, if I'm in good health, and, you know, I should be able to come back, and at that time, you can determine my length of stay or I can come back with a plan and say, you know, "I think I can give you another three years of my life or another two years of my life," you know, until I am...
Or ten?
Or ten. I mean, if I feel as young as I am, as I feel today, then, as Commissioner Suarez said, maybe ten. Um, for right now, it's going, I am planning, if that is the will and the wish of this commission, I am planning to return as city manager if that is what you're asking me to do. Yes, we know that. And of course, that comes with the same applies for Mercedes, at which time I am prepared to make a designation to the position of acting finance director. And like I said, I have thought this out. I have discussed it with you individually. I think everybody is on the same page, and I don't think that, I don't think that there's a... There should be any concerns. You have veteran, dedicated, consummate professionals that can pick up where we leave off for six months and until we return.
Okay.
But Mr. Mayor, at which time will the city manager name the interim?
At a future meeting. I think it can be done probably sometime in the spring of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Villalobos, I had a motion. Do I have to...
Then you can now make the motion.
Okay. I had a motion on the table.
Okay. Second. Okay.
Okay, the motion was withdrawn, but it's made again for five thousand dollars to the city manager for bonus, and second by Commissioner Blanis.
Okay. Um, can I have a friendly amendment on that?
Yes.
Okay. The friendly amendment, again, um, check the numbers. Uh, the numbers need the same way we did with the city clerk. And we want to make sure that we're... I'm okay, but, you know, let's check the numbers.
I concur, Mr. Mayor. I concur with that.
Yes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Uh, we don't mean to rush, but we got about ten minutes, so we need to move along. Uh, by the way, one of the reasons I, and you jumped the gun, but I'm glad you did. But one of the things that I contemplated, and nobody has talked about it, I noticed that in the budget, no raise was contemplated for the city manager. Everybody got a raise, and so, that's why I wasn't so hesitant about the amount of money. Because I, and just out of curiosity, Madam Manager, I mean, why, yes, uh, Mr. Attorney?
No, I don't want to interrupt you. I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, all right. So, Madam Manager, I...
Let me give you an explanation. And of course, we have not formally presented to you the preliminary budget that will happen at the seven-thirty meeting. However, we've had time to prepare it, submit it to you. The reasoning behind it is, obviously, I leave, I get off payroll on July thirtieth of next year, as the same applies to the finance director. What we are proposing, instead of giving us a raise, whatever you deem appropriate, or approving a raise as entertained for other employees, is we're asking you to allow us to collect our yearly salary in that ten-month period of time. Both of us have to deposit a check to the city for our continued medical insurance coverage as retirees. And so, I, we need to both do that. And instead of giving us a four percent, a three percent, whatever it is that you estimate that we are deserving of, I believe that it would be more prudent for us to be able to collect our salary and do the cutoff date with our benefits as of July thirtieth. It keeps it cleaner, it keeps your salary intact, and it limits the increases to affect the personnel costs. Because when we return, we will be saving the city money because we won't be eligible to participate in the state retirement system for a second pension. So, um, we're asking you to allow us to basically draw our salary in a ten-month window of time, which, if you give us a four percent raise, is gonna be a wash. And in any way, you look at it. So I think at the end of the day, you'll save on benefits by not awarding us a raise at this time.
Okay.
All right, I understand that.
That's the way she presented, you know, she's going to be, because she live in July. They both live in July.
Okay.
So that's why they parade that.
Okay, understood. Do we need to make a motion? I... There's a comment pending from the city attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment about Yolanda and make a clarification as far as Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Rodriguez just stated that now things are common still, and I assure you that you think that you know it all, but you don't. Uh, ninety-five percent of the problems that come out to the city are come out to this lady first, uh, seven days a week, sometimes twenty-four-seven, and to that gentleman that is sitting over there, Mr. Pena. And by the time that it gets to you, those problems are resolved. Because they're resolved before it comes to you, because our job is to make your life easy and to give you the right counsel. So... So this lady, uh, deserves not only the commendation, but the recognition that, uh, the problems that don't come to you are resolved, and I would say about ninety-five percent of the cases, because of this lady. We have conversations, uh, I don't call, um, uh, or she doesn't call me, the clerk, or, uh, Mr. Pena, uh, twenty-four, seven, but Yolanda does. And we do have conferences constantly, and as I say again, in my estimation, about ninety-five percent, it's resolved by this lady before it comes to you.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos.
Thank you very much. Good observation.
Thank you.
So things appear to be calm, because it's calm already when it comes to you, okay?
I like it.
Thank you. Okay, um.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos. And the same applies to you too.
Go to the order, anybody, uh, has anything for the go to the order?
We have to meet in seven-thirty, so I have to.
Okay, alright, uh, motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will be.
Let's be back at seven-thirty.
I will be needing about fifteen minutes, because I need to, uh, because of, uh, physical condition, I need to eat something.
Okay.
So, um.
So you'll be back in fifteen minutes?
In ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, alright.
Okay, I agree with you. I'm back in fifteen minutes.